Okay, yeah, thank you everyone for your patience while we sort out the the Catholic agenda. So we have a town council's Coricas James Cook Campbell present. We have planning board members, Strab Jeff Bennett, yeah. Light on Minnigan. Present also to join planning board town council public hearing. Your comment or proposed Mr. zoning ordinance regarding medical marijuana cultivation grow growing facilities? And folks who want to comment and do so, we'll run the meeting the way we usually do our public hearings. Everyone will have a chance to speak. We'll allow three minutes for opening comments. So so to speak around the room. And when everybody's had a chance to have their first turn, we'll come back for anybody else who wants to offer any rebuttal testimony, or they think of something else to say for another three minutes and we'll go through it again. So everybody will get a chance to speak, but we just have to put a some sort of a trophy on it so we can get through to a lot of people here. Leading up to the meeting, starting yesterday on August 16, 2021, I received email correspondence from Denise Foster, Bill Thomas, Judy Gordon, Richard McGregor, Jay Menney, Nancy Gainhart, Anne Clark, and Scott Landis. Most of those folks were in opposition to large scale medical marijuana, although the language was a little bit vague because they said marijuana, so because what we're proposing this evening is in fact a medical marijuana facility, not marijuana in general. And some of the comments alluded to recent referendum vote and petition for adult use marijuana. And again, we've tried to keep the waters clear on that so that we can understand that we're talking about medical marijuana marijuana in general. So if people make comments, we'd like you to address this particular ordinance as it applies to medical marijuana cultivation and growing facilities. And copies of the proposed ordinance are in the supporting documents on the town website. If you go to agendas, council 21 and click on August 7. It says supporting documents, you can see the language if you don't have a copy already. On August 17, 2021, that's another 19 folks that had emailed, Elizabeth Terrio, James Terrio, Diane Fogarty, Barbara Hopkins, Bruce Brown, Nancy Brown, Zelda Kenny, Nancy Breen, Mark Zimmer, Stephen Bays, Marilyn Lardner, William Michael Weaver, Chad Hagan, Anja Wittenborg, Nancy Crowley, Rebecca Kibler. It was an unspotted individual. Me, a resident, they didn't give their name, it was just an email. But that person Alexander Craig. That was my 28. And in addition to that, we're talking with Councilor Campbell, she had another 10 as well. So what we're going to do is is we'll append the minutes from the public hearing. We'll forward copies to the clerk of the correspondence, the text of the correspondence, so that'll be part of the public record of the public hearing. So everybody's comments, not in my words, but in the words of the individual writing, will be recorded for posterity. Those folks were generally opposed to large scale marijuana and many wish to extend the moratorium but delay. Nancy Crowley had questions regarding town benefit, revenue, the need. What happens if the town decides not to act and could it be a valid topic? Stephen Bay said questions about owner operating and caregivers. And Rebecca Kibler wanted to know about financial impact. We can speak to many things, I can't speak to finances at this time because we just don't know what the assessment would be on a proposed property because we haven't decided how big it's going to be. Or what 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 the implications would be for for property tax assessment and also for fees associated with if this facility was the pass. So that's a that would be a total guess this evening. We have some false language on that, but we don't have anything anything set yet. So this this represents almost a year's worth of effort by town staff and planning board and the town council. We started working on this back in August 25, 2020, was the first emergency moratorium adopted by the town for 180 days. That moratorium was renewed on February 9, 2021. And that same August 20, 2020, that's what it was. So 2021, the February 9th, when the second moratorium was just set to expire this Friday. So with that, if there's any other, Bill, do you care to make any other comments at this time?
No, I think you're fine. Thank you, Jack.
All right, so what we'll do is we'll we'll start and again, folks, if you could keep your comments to to three minutes and then just go through the list and do the tally of who's speaking and then whenever you've had a chance to speak, if someone wants to offer rebuttal or additional comments, we can do so again for additional time. So who wants to first? You folks showed up, you want to talk?
Sure.
Why don't you come over here? Greg, right?
Yes, yes.
Can you can you? This is this is new, so I don't know if you've ever seen it anywhere.
Yeah, you're you're fine anywhere.
Talking to this, okay, I can handle that. Thank you. Good evening, my name is Greg Zinzer, resident here in South Berwick over at Back Acres Lane, here to speak in position to the proposed ordinance in its current form. And would instead request that the the town council consider extending the moratorium so that you can continue to have a more thoughtful and deliberate approach as you consider this very important ordinance. For the past eight months, I have attended just about every town council and planning board meeting. And since day one, the council has adopted a mentality of we have no choice, that we must close the agricultural loophole. And that this is the only way, the only way we can accomplish this is by bringing in large scale medical marijuana cultivation. As we all know, the town's attorney has dispelled this on and has made it clear that there are multiple ways to remedy this particular situation. Yet the council continues to forge ahead as if no other option exists. I find this to be surprising as several of you have recently said at past meetings that you wish that it wasn't so, but that you have no choice. Other than the letters that have been sent to you in the past several months, I don't have a lot of comments beyond, I hope that it does accomplish what it is that you're setting out to, which is hopefully to protect the residents in all of the various zoning districts in town. Because in reviewing this particular ordinance, including ordinances from the towns of Kittery, Berwick, and Wyndham, I'm not so sure that it will. My concerns remain about residential caregivers operating out of their onsite premises. The ordinance makes reference to offsite premise. My my concern remains about the unregulated registered caregivers and what this ordinance may by default allow them to do. I have found the council over the past eight months to be very disrespectful and dismissive of citizens who have voiced their concern. And it seems that you've had more substantive conversations related to hamburgers and hot dogs for sale on the baseball fields going in over at the skating rink. You hardly acknowledged any letters or citizens' concerns that have been brought forward to your attention in writing. In one of the most recent letters, that 56 individuals signed on to that. And every one of those individuals signed on knowing what they were signing on to. And so again, you hardly acknowledge that and it's a lost my place. And anyway, as some of you have said at the past meeting and in writing, the counselors have heard nothing but opposition to this over the past eight months. So thank you very much.
Hey there, Jessica here, I live at 37 Academy Street. I just want to voice opposition to the ordinance as proposed for medical marijuana. I don't think that allowing multiple caregivers to operate under a similar structure is the way that our town should go. I don't think that we should allow long, large term cultivation in the area. It's just not conducive. We've heard multiple residents kind of coming forward and saying, this isn't the direction we want our town to go in. And I hope that you kind of open your ears to that. Thank you.
Sure, I wanted to wait till later, but I I probably am the only one that that looks at this and and in favor of this zoning ordinance because that's what we're looking at. And I have some long chops with comprehensive plan twice. I have planning board experience in being with planning board members and also as town council and school board member. And I think that that when you make, when you look at a piece like this, and I read the whole thing, it's pretty simple. It's simply putting in a use in the zoning ordinance. And I look at it like the opposition, I'm not sure is necessarily the zoning ordinance, but the opposition is probably the use of it. And I I wonder if we would have the same opposition if we put in a pharmaceutical company in the same area that we're looking at for this, in the same size, using the same kind of manufacturing that you're doing with this particular product. It this particular product is is used for the same as smart pharmaceuticals, seizures, nausea, pain, anxiety, depression. It's that's what this is all about. It's not about misuse. It's not about illegal activity. This zoning ordinance clearly puts it in a district. And I was actually a member when we we set out this district of the industrial park, thinking that that would be the best place to put factories. And I think it would be, and also you're looking at it as being under control as opposed to having caregivers have the ability to put their to grow their product anywhere they want to in town. And that's that is what the state is actually saying. This puts it in in one particular place. And I think oddly enough, this is what's keep going to keep our neighborhood safe. It's going to keep our children safe because it's under one control area. And I see that as a big benefit for the town, what's best for the most. And I would hope that the counselors look at this and possibly make your moratorium, you know, push your moratorium out again, extend that until you have a zoning ordinance in place that's respectful. I don't see that, you know, I I watch some of these sometimes, I read minutes. I disrespectful is I'm not hoping that that is what's happening. I worry about that statement. So I I believe that this ordinance is something that you should use right now. You can always adjust it later and extend your moratorium until you've you've got this in place because it takes so many days and stuff when you vote for something like this. And then I wonder too, we have many, many people that are speaking against it. But I don't hear anyone speaking for it. And I wonder why? Are we just looking for people to speak against it? That group is too is too tight. It's too cloistered. That's all I can say right now, please.
Yeah, that's all we have for in person. Let's see, Ilaria, you have your hand up?
May I just ask a question as a planning board member? Due to the pandemic, I don't know everybody. And I didn't, I didn't hear a name or address. I don't know who that was just speaking. I apologize.
I'm Michelle Coricas from 15 Parent Street.
Thank you, nice to meet you. I didn't know. Thank you very much.
Hi, thank you. My name's Ilaria Zinzer and I live on Back Acres Lane. I've attended almost every planning board or town council meeting since December of 2020. And the few I had to miss, I watched on replay. After everything I've watched and witnessed, I'm deeply dismayed at the way the medical cultivation ordinance has been presented by the town council as the only way to prevent cultivation in all zones of town, as if we have no other options. Our town attorney, Phil Sossier, dispelled that misinformation at the October 29, 2020 ZBA meeting where he stated clearly, and I quote, "The town can decide to create a land use category for medical cultivation and regulate it, including prohibit it, in my view." He also said the same thing in the meeting with the planning board in February. However, despite Phil Sossier's providing clear guidance, this option was never once discussed by the town council in any meeting, nor were any other options discussed. Instead, the town council took a tunnel vision approach and continues to say that the only way to address this issue is to allow cultivation in certain zones. Normally, when a town makes decisions, they publicly weigh out all of the options and then deliberate on which option makes sense. That was never done publicly where it should have happened. And instead, medical cultivation was fast tracked by the town council as the only option that was right for South Berwick without any deliberation of our full range of object of our full range of options. The public deserve to see you discuss the full range of options before you picked your preferred choice. As late as the last town council meeting, you were still kicking around the idea of going for a visit to a grow facility for the first time to get a sense of what they are like. And yet you had already drafted this ordinance ordinance without even that basic knowledge. Several citizens respectfully presented various concerns, all of which were ignored repeatedly over the last nine months. Environmental concerns were ignored. Impacts regarding proximity to the high school and the pumpkin town development were ignored. And all the months of public opposition have been ignored for many citizens. My question is, who does the town council answer to? Do you answer to the citizens of South Berwick? Do you answer to threats from Attorney Snow or to your own personal agendas? I encourage you to rethink this fast tracked plan and be a part of getting it right for South Berwick. It goes without saying that I do not support large scale marijuana cultivation in any zone of South Berwick. And in the words of our attorney, Phil Phil Sossier, you can create a land use category for medical cultivation and regulate it, including prohibit it. And that is exactly what I think the town council should do. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Heather?
Hi there. Well firstly, I'd like to say I I'm very pleased with the quality of video and sound. I I can hear everyone really well, so that's fantastic. First of all, I, you know, I'm Heather Holland. I live on Bell Marsh Road. I am a representative of the South Berwick Recreation Department Committee, and I'm also a school board member and a longtime South Berwick residence resident. And I would just like to state my opposition of large scale medical marijuana cultivation and growing facilities in any zone in the town of South Berwick. And I also would like to note the fact that resources and efforts would need to be really looked at in terms of the environmental impact on our land, the cost to the town for oversight and enforcement. And and actually, the need, is there an actual need to have a facility such as this in our town? And what would the property value impact be? I think that there there's a there are a lot of strong questions that really need to be answered. But I just wanted to take the opportunity right now and and say that I am absolutely opposed to all of this. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Tamara Steinhauer?
Hi there. Tamara Steinhauer, 19 Hill Drive. I just want to say that I am opposed to medical marijuana cultivation, production and manufacturing as proposed in this ordinance. I have a couple of comments. You said you were working on this since August 2020. I am curious as to what kind of studies have been done about the impact on water supply, odor and air pollution, and security concerns. And I'm curious also, next summer, when there's a drought and I can't water my garden, what restrictions will they have to follow? Because it is well known that marijuana cultivation uses a vast amount of water. So I am concerned about that. And I I this is not just like any other pharmaceutical company, like one of the prior commentators said. So I I do oppose it. I oppose any large scale medical marijuana cultivation, manufacturing, processing in any zone of our town. And I would, I would love to hear the town council respond to all the questions that have been posed to them over the past few months about this very issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Tamara. Steve, who else has the hand up? I just see Nancy. Last name.
Yeah. And that's a, it's actually Dick Crowley. It's my wife's computer account. Is it my turn there, Jack?
Yeah.
Yep. Well, thank you. Thank you for the time to listen to, and I do appreciate the work. I'm sure it's not easy. The town council's trying to go through all this. But I'm against the ordinance, the medical marijuana ordinance. And some of the things that that I think about is one, is that I don't want to mention any company names, but there's a medical marijuana store opposite the post office. That was not intended to be there, and it was an unintended consequence. So I'm I'm concerned about what are we not seeing that's going to pop up because the way this is written. So I encourage the town to take time and maybe let other towns make the mistake. You know, let's look and see what they do before we go into it. Because once, my understanding is the one that's across the post office grandfathered, there's nothing we can do about that. And just about any other business, once they're established, is also grandfathered. So I I think that by going into this and getting stuff done now, it's it could lead to an unintended consequence, which will be grandfathered, and we can't do anything about it. Another concern I have is there was just a ruling by a judge that out of state companies are allowed to invest. Is that not true? So I'm concerned that out of state companies are going to be coming to South Berwick that really don't care about South Berwick. They just want to make money because of our geographic location, we're close to the border and highways and so forth. And I think that it won't help South Berwick, it will it'll hurt it. And last thing is, I really just don't see the need. I don't understand why we need a medical marijuana processing and growing facility in South Berwick. It seems like there's there's plenty of product available for those that need it. I'll kind of go back to the argument I've heard a long time ago, that there's one pharmacy in town, and that's that's sufficed us for decades that we've been here. And so I don't understand why we have to, we don't have to have a a pharmaceutical company making prescription drugs in South Berwick. We we have a pharmacy, it works great. And again, I thank you for your time, but as I think the police chief, when he wrote a letter about this topic, he said, go slowly. So I would encourage you to go slowly. Please, I would extend the the moratorium on it, and I would like to see it just permanently stopped until we can look at other towns and see how it affects them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dick. Steve, Steve Bays.
Hi, good evening. Steve Bays, 160 of Gunkwit Road. I live across from the caregiver retail store, Nature's Miracle on Ogunquit Road. And the reason I mention that is because a a lot of these things, all the lines trace back to that facility on Ogunquit Road. And the first moratorium related to medical marijuana cultivation started with a group of citizens in this area that came down. And the first moratorium was put in place over four years ago now, July 25, 2017. So this this issue has been a has been alive that long. I'm opposed to the proposed amendment, as I have seen no citizen support for this throughout the almost the last year. It feels to me personally like this was a handshake wink wink deal between former manager Perry Ellsworth and and the owner of the property, Mr. Springer, when he purchased this land, that's what started the action of writing this ordinance. Prior to that, we had gone through three years of moratoriums. And as you all know, or those that attended over those months, we continue to hear the the comment about the loophole, the agricultural use, anything can be managed or could be put in there. We learned through the through the discussions with the attorney that were mentioned, that we do have many other options than that. The option I like the best is if we had defined medical marijuana cultivation. If we had changed our definition of agricultural, that it does not include medical marijuana cultivation. And we didn't put medical marijuana cultivation on our on our land use table, the issue would have been done with. It would not have been allowed in town if there was enough enough interest in citizens, they certainly could have gone through the process, could have come to the council, could have done the petition thing. You know, whatever they would like if there was enough support. But again, I haven't seen any support over the last eight months. The only other thing I wanted to mention or emphasize, you know, is we need a a town council that is helping us, the citizens, develop the South Berwick that we want to have. We don't need a a town council and a manager that decides for us what we should have in place and hopes that nobody shows up at the meetings or that nobody's vocal about it, and then it gets voted in. And I I would hope that we we learn some lessons from this process as well as the adult use stuff, that we can be more effective in our citizen engagement and in reviewing the options. Those were great, great meetings to have the attorney, both with the planning board and with the council, things like that, that we can use going forward to to just help us, help South Berwick be what we all want it to be. Thank you.
Is it Bella?
Oh, Alita.
Oh, Alita.
Yeah, you got it right. I'm Alita Galvin, 46 Beaver Dam Road. I do not belong to any group or any affiliation, but this did catch my interest. I would have some serious concerns about this as well. I think Tamara's question, particularly in regard to water usage, is an extremely valid question, especially considering that, like she said, we can't even water on gardens in this town this summer. And if that happens again, is that going to suck all our water usage and the rest of us are going to left stuck? Not be able to use what we're paying for. But I have to say, it sounds to me like there's quite a bit of opposition. There's very little, I I've only heard one person mention that they're in favor of it. It seems to me like there's no harm in taking the time to make sure that you're addressing all of the concerns of the residents that you're supposed to be representing in this matter. That is what we elect you for. And if there is this much concern, I understand you've taken time to do some homework and things. I understand you've taken time to do some homework and things, but it sounds like maybe more time needs to be taken so that you're making this in a way that does address the concerns of the citizens that are here. Um so I don't see why there needs to be any hurry on this and why we can't take the time to do that correctly.
Thank you. Paul Steinhauer.
Paul Steinhauer, nineteen.
Speaker's off, Paul.
David, you go.
Better, better.
Uh still like the week.
Okay, okay, somebody else will call in. Who wants to call him back?
Oh, there we said.
Who else would like to?
Up, bro.
Okay, so that.
Up, the left.
The leaders already spoken.
Yeah.
I'm not seeing any hands up. If you can't click the artificial hand on your screen, raise your hand. You have an hour to speak. Okay.
I'm sure Tamra's trying to talk to us, or she's talking to Paul.
And so Paul's gonna comment.
I think if you shut your speakers off, you won't get that.
Shut one of them off.
One of the one of the computers up.
But that's okay. Uh he'll be right here.
Okay.
Yeah, Paul Steinhauer, nineteen Hill Drive. Uh I'd like to voice my opposition. Oppose opposing the ordinance as is. I don't think that marijuana cultivation commercially, large scale processing, manufacturing, in any way, shape or form, should be added as a land use item to Table A. I also oppose the continuation of the moratorium uh in terms of adding more time to look into this. The environmental impacts of this particular industry are well documented, and I don't think that South Berwick can take that risk to endanger our environmental delicate balance that we have today. So more time isn't going to do any good. The science, the research is all there. I would like to see the town council rather take up an ordinance to prevent that use from being in the industrial zone and prevent it from being defined as part of agricultural. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Sorry. He else. Okay. Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, um planning board members, um where this is a ordinance amendment, zoning ordinance, uh question one forty to six amendment. The planning board uh shall report its recommendation regarding the proposed amendment at the public hearing. If you prepare to do that tonight, based on the language that we see in front of us.
Uh this is Bill Strop, Chair of the Planning Board. Uh yeah, the the um or ordinance was forwarded to the town council as we recommended it. There I want to point out that there were two. Well, let me back up a bit. The idea was to put a circle around these uh this particular use uh on the recommendation of everybody, including the town attorney, to define it so that it can be regulated. Uh we bought that it was not regulated because of a potential agricultural loophole. There may have been other ways to get at that, but it was recommended to define the use and then regulate the use. That was our that was our and we and that's what we forwarded to the town council. Uh and I think that's the best way to put a circle around this thing. There was two important parts uh that we failed to have a consensus on regarding at one, regarding the size of these facilities, and two, regarding when they would kick in. Uh on the on the second one, uh there was a question as whether they kick in after for more than uh two or more registered caregivers, which was the uh original intent. There was some planning board members who wanted that to be three or more. Um so so that would have allowed uh more expanded cultivation elsewhere in town under the agricultural loophole. I personally, for the record, don't support that. I think it should be two or more. So any anybody any anybody wanting to do this and more than a single registered caregiver would need to go through this ordinance. That's my personal view. The second issue that we didn't have a firm recommendation on is is the beginning, and that would be the size of it. And there's been a lot of discussion about um whether it could be de minimis, whether it could be zero, whether it could be significant, whether it's industrial. Our basic recommendation is that it be small and modest. We suggested a five thousand square foot cultivation area, which would accommodate ten uh registered caregivers. Um it could be smaller than that. And uh again, I've got the floor, so I'll give you my personal opinion. I think it should be smaller than that. I I don't think there's a need in South Berwick for this kind of facility. I think we're surrounded by them. You go to towns around us, they're everywhere. I think the need, the legitimate need of people um and medical marijuana is already met in our region, but that's my personal view, not not the entire planning board's view. So I I would support that number being as small as um as um as possible. And the suggestion has been it be zero. It wouldn't bother me, uh but I'll let other planning board members make their comments as well.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Jeff, what Hershey?
Um, thank you. Uh I think this was are complicated if you had watched uh or been at the planning board meetings. We wasn't a light subject to talk about. Um I think that um I agree uh a lot with uh what Bill had said. My my um I I mean, I also see the the points that a lot of the the uh speakers have have mentioned tonight as far as their options, um as far as how we go about defining it otherwise. But I I think that the planning board went through and felt that we needed to define and sort of encapsulate it. Uh and that was, in in my mind, what we are attempting as a planning board to do is to say, this is where it is, and this is what we expect, um which at that point um as you guys know, uh in the town, the town council, um we then pushed it uh back to you guys to deal with with the other stuff that was pretty much out of our realm in as the planning board, be it licensing and um and then kind of working out the the distances. Um so I think that I I think there can, I can't say we had consensus that it should it shouldn't be in town, but we did what we could to try and work within the planning board's means. So um but I I would second Bill's comments that he just made. Thank you.
Hershey, thank you, Jeff.
Hey, Jack, I have one quick question. I'm under the impression that the moratorium, when it runs out, is not renewable. Is that correct?
Yes.
So actually, jump in here.
Please.
Moratorium ends on Friday. We currently do not have enough time to renew it. Had we done this like a month ago, we would have had time to extend our moratorium, uh but we we chose not to do that.
Okay, I I remember hearing several months ago, at more than two months ago, that um we only could renew the moratorium twice, and after that had to sort of make a decision about it. No?
Any progress? Way to go, and uh um I think if we were challenged in court, the remedy would be to to tell us to make up our minds.
Okay, alright.
I think it's just a question, not to be disingenuous.
Sure.
Going forever and ever.
So, uh I'd like to address some of the comments that have been made, and um I'll say I'll say this. I think um we have had enough time to look at many options, and it sounds like for people who want to look at other options, the only option is to ban it, and they're just not happy with the option that we've chosen. Um I feel like there are a lot of issues that people don't agree on, and then we compromise. And to me, this is a very good compromise, and for people who would like it banned entirely from town, in fact, we barely will have anything happen. So uh to me, this is not a large growth facility. Five thousand square feet is fairly small. It'll be smaller than some of the other factory buildings up at the end of Fife's Lane. It is a way for caregivers to gang together and um run a viable business and save money and not be in your neighborhood. And a lot of the concerns raised, I find incredibly disingenuous and insulting to my own intelligence. Um you know, if we were growing tomatoes there, I wouldn't hear anybody showing up at planning board meetings complaining about water use. Right? And I have to agree with Mrs. Karakas, or Ms. Karakas, I'm sorry, that, you know, it just seems like this isn't about the particular use at all. It, oh, sorry, it isn't about all of these other issues that keep getting brought up. We haven't been hasty. We haven't been thoughtless. We haven't not listened to your concerns. Um we have ordinances already in place that deal with environmental issues and water use issues and the light ordinance and traffic issues. It really is that none of you like marijuana, and I'm really sorry you're uncomfortable with marijuana. I don't use it myself. I like drinking a beer, but I also don't say to everybody, well, who does it serve to have beer served in our town? Or who does it serve to have, you know, you can get beer somewhere else. To me, that is like the argument of a five year old to say, why do we need it? How does it benefit? You know who it benefits? It benefits people who need medical marijuana. It has to be grown somewhere, and this idea that you feel like we should punt it to other towns, to me, is ridiculous. So I have to say, I am fine with the ordinance as we've written it.
And so it's like there's still a, as far as planning board concerns, the recommendation is with the ordinance, but further consideration should be made as the what the number of caregivers or registered caregivers are that would kick in. It was that number two, three, five, whatever that is. Uh and the other piece is the um the grow area within the building.
Yeah, Jack, just to be uh uh clear on that, it's it wasn't a question of two or three or some other number. It was just a question of two or three.
Okay.
So I to to weigh in here, um the the reason it was sized to five thousand square feet, and it was it was somewhat a shot in the dark, is that um each caregiver is allowed five hundred feet of canopy.
Right.
So, you know, my guess is three caregivers wouldn't get together and and have the capital or bear the expense of building a building, right, and everything that went with it, just for them to have three of them. Like, there's no economies of scale there. And so it seemed, you know, five thousand square feet would accommodate, not ten actually, because you need to have other space, but the five hundred foot canopy would maybe be anywhere from five to six growers. To me, that's not large growth facility for processing. That's a small little building, you know, in the middle of our industrial area, exactly where it should be and exactly where we put other industries. So.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I I I everything that Hershey's saying is a hundred percent accurate and 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 comprehensive and insightful, but just the five thousand feet number, if that number is has meaning, was intended or actually called as cultivation area. So the common areas would be excluded from that. So if it was five thousand. Yeah, so it was five thousand feet, that that would accommodate up to ten uh growers.
Thanks, Bill.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Good, good point.
So um and the question is, is anyway, that that's where that that number is, and we discussed whether that number is high or low.
Are there any members of the public that have not spoken yet that wish to speak? Spoken. Put the speak on you.
You got three, you got three right across the top of the board, Jack.
But Greg raised his hand before, so I recognize Greg's in for three minutes.
So I don't know if it's appropriate to just, I have a comments in no no particular order. Uh but I just have a a question about the moratorium, because i- is it in fact, it can't be renewed anymore? It's done and over with?
We're out of time.
We're we're out of time, so that you can't call it emergency meeting and retro.
Has to be posted in the public hearing, no, but.
Fair, fair enough. So there's a couple of options moving forward. Uh but I want to, for the folks that spoke in favor of it, uh there are a couple of comments here. This is not necessarily, while it may be for some of us, about marijuana. This is more about regulation versus not being regulated, regulated versus unregulated. Part of the concern that we have with this is that, and we've had this discussion before, and I understand that you're only attacking a small portion of this, but the cultivation ordinance also has impacts on the registered caregivers who can operate locally in any zone out in town that they can do right now. The the concern uh as it pertains to the relation versus unregulated is you are only regulating a very small portion of the marijuana industry here in town. We're not, we're still not regulating the individual caregivers. So this isn't about being anti marijuana, the getting a beer or going to buy a whoopee pie. All of those industries in town are currently regulated. If I, as a citizen, have a problem or a concern, I can call the town manager or the code enforcement officer, and they can go out and respond, and if this person is found to be in violation, remedial action could be taken. With the marijuana industry, you can't do that. That's the issue here. That's the core issue. And just as important, I believe, anytime now, if not already occurring, what you should also be aware of is the change in the licensing status for registered caregivers. Registered caregivers who can operate anywhere in town at this point in time, up to five hundred square feet of canopy plus some limited uh types of of industrial activity, I believe their licenses are going to be changing, if not already happening in another couple of weeks or so, to automatically allowing them to become a dispensary. And when that happens, a registered caregiver can then grow an unlimited number of plants. Imagine that happening next to you uh in your residential zone. So this issue, because we're not attacking it in a comprehensive fashion and looking to regulate all of it, that's the issue. And so what we do here with cultivation absolutely is going to have an effect. If we go back to what the original planning board recommendation was for two versus three uh registered caregivers operating on a particular lot, that's that is the other loophole called, it's the two, four, three, zero D that I've mentioned before in my letters. Are we in fact, by instituting this ordinance as recommended by the council, uh is that going to close that particular loophole? And that, by reading this, I'm not so sure that that has happened. If that's what we want, if that's what the council wants, maybe that's a good thing. But the issue is, it then this has drafted right now, as I said, I'm not, I'm opposed to it in its current draft form, because I think the unintended consequences. Okay, thank you. So I think anyway, you could, you know, I think one issue of the easy way to resolve this issue is to change the agricultural definition to problem solve, and then go back and have a more comprehensive review.
Okay. Okay, Hershey, go ahead.
So since that was at the the two people who spoke in favor, and I guess I was one of them, I I will respond. I feel like what's going on on a Gunkwit Road is a nightmare, and I certainly would not want to live anywhere near that guy. Um on the other hand, I think he is an outlier in what has happened, and can other people do that? I I don't know. I think what he's doing out there must be illegal. I don't know why it hasn't been enforced. I don't really understand why we can't get him to stop. Um if it means we have to enact. If it means we have to enact something where we set limits on the time people can come and pick things up, I'm fine with that. I absolutely feel a lot of sympathy for anybody who lives near there. I think it's awful, I've been by there, I understand what's going on, I don't really understand why we can't fix it. On the other hand, we have had registered caregivers growing marijuana here for at least 10 years. I know a few who live around me, I don't find anything, they have absolutely no impact on me, my neighborhood. They have a tiny hoop house or they grow in a barn, and I don't really see where the harm is. And so I don't really understand what regulation we need to have around them. You know, they, we don't have people coming and going at all hours to pick up marijuana. And I assume because they're nice people and sensible, that's how they run their business. And I just, I don't really see why there's suddenly this need for more regulation when this has been going on for a really long time. And most of you have no idea where they are and they don't bother anybody. So I'd really like to hear from Greg, who I think has been the most articulate about the issue, about what, if it's just this guy on a gonk it road, let's fix it.
One, yes, we need to get back on track. We're not here to talk about, and I just, we would put the comment set. But tonight's public hearing is about this ordinance. And if we get down this track, we're gonna get anything done tonight. So we need to get back on track of just discussing this ordinance to grows.
On the ordinance, I have a, Michelle Curry, 15 Perrin Street, I have a question about the ordinance. It looks to me like we've started to find and just like Bill's, you have a definition.
Hey, Ron, can you put yourself on mute?
I'm trying.
Wow, this is true.
I can tell, isn't it making all the noise?
There's no red microphone.
You started with the, with, you start plan, start is defining it. This ordinance here, as I look at it, and the state has been, this has gone on for 20 years. But, you know, when it was regulated 20 years ago, was it 20 years ago or 30 years?
1999.
1999. So when it was first started, the state had the rules, the town can make, has to go by those rules, can make them a little bit more strict, but has to go by those rules. And growers could be anywhere. I believe, I live very close to a grower. And I couldn't tell you any impact that it has on me or my children that go by that place. I don't see any impact at all. I see it as quiet, as Hershey said, it's just, it's just being there. This ordinance is just saying that a few growers can be together and it's a larger area and it's more controlled. It's less of a, I think the one on a gonk it road is an outlier. I can tell you where that one is because I've driven by it, I know where it is, depending on where the wind.
Stick to the ordinance.
So the ordinance, I'm applauding the definition part of the growing facility.
Thank you. Tamara, number two, for you.
Yes, a couple of things. Someone mentioned, I think someone on the planning board mentioned that the 5,000-square-foot size was a shot in the dark. I'm not all that confident about a shot in the dark. And we're not talking about one grower, we're talking about 10 growers. We're not talking about a tiny hoop house or a barn or anything else. We're talking, I would, I vote for the, I'd like to ban it. Because I think Hershey mentioned, you know, people should be able to get this product. They can stumble 40 feet in any direction and find a spot they can get it. It's not like we're, it's not like we have to have something for everyone here in town. They could drive, oh, I don't know, three miles and get it. So it's not that it's not available for people.
Can I just ask, Tamara, then, so you feel like it's okay to punt it to Elliot, even though you wouldn't want it in your town?
I'm not, is this a discussion between you and I, Hershey? Or?
You did mention my name, so I'm just saying, since I said that and you replied to what I had to say, I'm just saying, you know, you want to ban it, but.
Thank you, so, so I'm done. I do.
Excuse me, Tamara. So for everybody, we're not going to get back and forth with each other on this. We're gonna address comments through the chair, we're gonna try and keep it in order. If this starts becoming, you know, back and forth between everybody on the screen, well, we might never get home tonight. So let's keep it orderly and keep it to the point. So Tamara, please proceed.
Tamara, you are muted a little bit, you're muted, not a little bit.
I think we both did it.
One more time, Tamara, unmute yourself, just verbally.
There you go.
I don't think we can compare one to 10. I don't think a shot in the dark for 5,000 square feet works. It doesn't, to me, it sounds like, oh, let's just, okay, 5,000. I guess I'd like to ban it after hearing what the planning board has had to say. And I'm done.
Thank you, Tamara. Hilarious. Your second round.
Was the town council ever able to go take a tour of one of these facilities? No, okay. So, you know, my concern is that you have written an ordinance about facilities you've never been inside of. Now that I am aware that we're out of moratoriums, and it's probably fair that we should be after having three and have done nothing with them, really. I am more certain that I think we need to prohibit, as our attorney says we can. It's an option, one that the town council never had the courtesy to deliberate upon or even speak upon publicly, which I think is unfair to the voters who lean in this favor. I think all options should be discussed by the town council publicly because that's how you come to a fair and balanced decision. It was never done. So given the process, which I believe Hershey was disingenuous, I think this should be prohibited because we're out of time and that's the best way to handle this at this point. Given that we have run this down to the wire, we have not made proper use of prior moratoriums, and we haven't even been inside one of these facilities. So how can we write an ordinance for something we have no experience with? And Hershey, you said that you wouldn't want to live next door to Steve Bayes, but the people on Lord's Lane and Fife's Lane who live across the street from these facilities, that's fine. To them, right?
Shots at each other, if you have some comments on the ordinance, that's fine.
Fair is fair.
But, hey, look, we've been called liars, called disingenuous, we've been called a lot of things, we don't respond. So just keep it to the ordinance and keep it square and we'll have more here, thank you very much.
I'm quoting Hershey's words, disingenuous, they're not mine.
Okay, Steve, number two for you.
Good evening, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go to the direction you think I might. But I did want to ask if, if the council has heard from Mr. Springer, who initially tried, you know, requested a building permit about a year ago that kicked this all off and to see if he is anxiously awaiting this to pass? Or has he changed his direction? And as some of you may know, you know, he operates a facility in Wells and in Berwick. I don't know if it happened, but a proposal in Wells was to expand that for, to three buildings, approximately 5,000 square feet each. So it's, and I, again, he, you know, on appearance, there, I'm not, I'm not trying to say that he doesn't operate a fine business. I'm just trying to, trying to determine whether the council has had any interaction with him on his desires for this ordinance still? Or is, is he someone else that hasn't even, you know, confirmed his interest still? Thank you.
We've been contacted by Mr. Springer, through his attorney, Tammy Snow. That was, that letter is dated October 8, 2020, it's out of the record. And.
So, I'm sorry, did you say October 2020?
October 8, 2020, Tammy Snow representing David Springer. And that's the seminal case here in terms of the loophole, as we call it, as far as that definition of agriculture, non-livestock. That's what set the whole ball rolling.
No, I think, I think we understand that's what, what started it. But again, you know, their attorney's opinion, the same as my attorney's opinion, is different than the town attorney's opinion or the way we could approach it. So, I mean, if we haven't had any interest from him in over a year, perhaps his desires have changed with what to do with that property.
No idea, we're reacting to the facts in front of us. Anybody else? Belita?
Yeah, so I guess my point, you're out of moratoriums, fair. If you really feel the need to regulate, and it does sound like some kind of regulation needs to happen, I would definitely support what Bill and what Jeff were saying. You can lower that number, the 5,000-square-feet. I do think that's rather large, particularly when you're talking about an area that's potentially closer to a school. That definitely is a lot different than a smaller growth operation. So I do feel like, you know, if this is something you feel you have to do, this is something you could make smaller and regulate even more than what you're already anticipating. I can't always make school board meetings, I do pay attention to what's going on in the town because I have kids, they have activities, whatever. I am disappointed that asking questions is considering, considered disrespectful or insulting people's intelligence. We're just asking simply because we want to know and that's the only reason. So I would, if you gotta make a vote, make a vote. But I would recommend that you go with what Bill and Jeff are saying and you can limit that number all the way down to zero.
Okay, anybody else? Jessica?
Hey, Jessica Sierra on Academy Street, I think I'm hearing tonight, like, if we're able to, we cannot extend the moratorium, we're out of time. But if we were to gate it at a zero square footage, maybe at another point in time, once things are more thought out, you can amend that. But that would definitely give us more time.
Thank you. Anyone else for the second rebuttal or? Okay, we'll go around one more time, anybody else have anything else? New, new business, it's not repetition. I see Steve Bayes, he had the number three.
Yeah, just a question on, or a question on, similar to what Jessica just asked. Would the other possible approach be to re, you know, have the ordinance, but remove it from the table, not allow it anywhere at this moment in time? So there's, you know, it's not allowed in any zone.
That's the will of the council, you know, it's still, you know, we're at a point of sale here, so to speak. And depending on what gets voted on this evening, that could, that's within the realm of possibility.
Well, that sounds like a very plausible possibility and it seems like the smart way to go, I just wanted to say that.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Okay, with that, if there are any questions?
Hey, Jack. I'm sorry, I put my hand up right as you were in a talk, can I just make one point also? Through my, throughout the whole thing, I've been beating the licensing drum. I personally, I don't think that licensing could, should be put at an astronomical amount. Through watching other meetings, I think licensing is not given enough value. I do think that it would be, this is just me speaking, but I think that it's empowering to the potentially, the code enforcement officer and employees of the town, if there's licensing and strong licensing put in, not just by strong, I don't mean put it at $50,000 for a license. If it's, if it's $50, that's great, but put thought and strong thought behind the licensing. Then it allows the town workers as well to be able to do their job most effectively. And so that's, I guess, as people go back and look at me talking about licensing, that's really where my, my stance is, is not just saying that we have a license and that the owner of the building has to have a license, but to know what's happening. And, and so I guess that's what I just wanted to clarify, that the licensing could and could be a very good resource for the town to be able to make sure we're, we're understanding what's happening in our borders. Thank you.
Jeff, just to pressure a little bit on that, we have proposed fees of $3,000 for a new and $1,500 for renewal. Were you speaking to that or were you speaking to something else?
No, just kind of speaking in general, as far as, I think that, to me, I don't know if that's a, I can't speak to the amount. I, all I'm saying is just, in past meetings, I have seen, you know, Mallory step up and push for the licensing and I appreciate that, I just felt like, I felt like it was just put on her because she, she ended up having, it was a sticking point for her. So I just wanted to mention it as far as, if there's beefed-up rules, then, then things tend to, to weed themselves out as well.
You read see-through eye that Mallory put in this ordinance?
Yeah, there's a happy.
Because see-through eye, pretty much if they don't go check their mail every day, we can shut them down. Mallory did a fantastic job on the licensing requirements that are in here.
I agree.
They're pretty stout.
Yep.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And again, I'm, I'm not standing here to debate it, I'm merely stating my point that licensing is important.
Okay. I'll put back, any comments or questions, Mallory? John? Phil, in your view from the planning board, can we change I-1 to an N tonight and call it done at the will of the council?
We recognize that this is a council action, you have a recommendation, you can do what you feel is wise.
If I can.
Thank you for that politically correct answer, sir.
It's what it is.
I agree, thank you.
Sometimes you take our recommendations, sometimes you don't.
Just to make public for everyone, the council's on last communication, I did speak with Phil Sossier today and had some email communication and a phone call with him, and I shared this with everyone, kind of on that specific question. And so the gist was, I had asked that question, it could be, given how we've defined things in this ordinance and the fact that we are very clearly separating medical cultivation from registered caregivers, from the phrase allocation was not the registered caregiver's primary or residence, other patients' primary or residence. Phil felt that because we are making that clear differentiation and we're separating this from caregivers, that we could swap out the MSP for an N in the I-1 district. He did feel like that was potentially like a little bit risky and potentially could open us up for some litigation. But he did say, given that we are separating the two, that is something we could consider. But again, it was a very legal response and not what's certainly one way or the other.
And Mallory, just to expand upon that a little bit, because we had an executive session with Phil that was.
that was very enlightening, and that was where in particular, we really tried to flesh out the concept of, is there a need, is there a problem with our definition of agriculture? We all agree now, yes, we have to change that. But going along, going along with that, was there a problem then if we added the I-1 to an N, making it prohibited? I remember him in the executive session telling us, and cautioning us against creating an ordinance that essentially was going to ban something. So that's, that's, that's my memory from that.
Very serious point, Abby. I think you're correct.
Right.
Yeah. Just, just my own comment. A lot of folks are, are putting a lot of weight on the words of the town attorney as they were talking before the ZBA and at the planning board workshop. A lawyer is never going to tell you what to do. They don't make their living telling you what to do. They make their living reacting to what's put in front of them. And there's been a lot of mileage, I think, given to say that, sure, you can prohibit it. And they will say that, yeah, prohibit it, yeah, you can prohibit it, you have the power to do it. He's not going to limit the power of the legislative body to act. But similarly, and one of the reasons that we are where we are, is that he's also stated that we have problems under our definition of agricultural, agriculture, non livestock. That is a giant loophole, and he doesn't feel as though we have that opinion that, that to prohibit that as a, to prohibit medical marijuana cultivation, because we feel as though it's not agriculture, is a weak argument, and we're likely to lose. So where we are right now is, we can, if this thing fails, we will have this particular use available all over town. Just look at the land use table under agricultural non livestock. You'll see SPs, SPs, yes, 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 maybe one MSP in there. It is permitted all over town. The only zone that's not permitted is Resource Protection, and we don't know and lose it. So this is a reaction to fix a weakness in our ordinance that exists already, and it's the least onerous way of keeping ourselves out of court, and to protect and preserve our neighborhoods. That's what it's all about. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. And what we'll do is we'll convene, does anyone need a break?
I can, yes.
Okay. Well, we'll convene in five minutes for the regular, a special council.
I guess that would be very politically incorrect and say, light them, smoke them if you got them.
Or you want you?
No.
And you know what, Greg, she doesn't care.
Yeah, it's a definition of agriculture all done.
Barbara, I love that you are in our meetings again. I missed you so much when you weren't in our meetings.
Always need a little comedy.
You betcha.
Just to let you know, you're on a hot mic. You're on a hot mic.
I'm on a hot mic? Soon as I move up north in a couple of years, I can go wild, I'm up in North Saltwood. It's gonna be scarier if I just go to the meetings and sit in the back of the room and don't say anything.
I don't think there should be in the morning either to do that.
Barbara, you're moving?
I started that rumor, did I?
Hot mic.
You don't.
See, I hate having my.
Go back?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Okay, so the public hearing ended at, what time is it, Barbara?
8:05.
And what time did we convene?
6:52.
Okay, so we'll convene in a public hearing, a regular meeting of the, or special meeting of the council at 8:09.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The three councils present and one on zone. So all of our votes would have to be, be a roll. New business, action on zoning ordinance regarding medical marijuana cultivation production. So is there any member of the public who should make a comment on this particular?
Thank you, Jack. Not sure where it's going to go tonight. I would recommend the board, but in, in, under major site plan, in Bennett, and then immediately at the next meeting, enter into discussions to alter the agricultural definition. You can get that done in relatively short order, and you can eliminate the language that was just adopted, and then that should eliminate any of the, who's surrounded, surrounding, adopting ordinance in that manner.
Just a thought. Okay, thank you. Yeah, the members of the public wish to speak on the action of the zoning ordinance. Prior to my deliberation. Leria?
Thank you, Jack. I support Greg's comments. I would do exactly as he says. There has not been enough public support for this. In fact, there's been broad-based opposition, and I think it doesn't make sense to ignore the public. So many hundreds of people, or you've had, you've had several emails, and several people who've come out and spoken against this over the course of eight, nine months. And I just don't think it's ever wise to ignore your constituents. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Tamara?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I support what Greg said as well.
Great, thank you, Steve.
I just wanted to confirm, I recommend you oppose it. It wasn't brought up at all, but another option would be, can we move it to the November ballot and have the citizens vote on it? Thank you.
I'm seeing heads shaking here on that. Let's see. I don't see a name.
Check plan?
Hi, that's me. My wife and I are residents. I don't know if you can hear me. Can you?
Yeah. Need a name and an address?
Okay, great. I'd prefer not to. I am in, I'm not against, and if you don't want to use my, my piece, that's okay, but with it being medical marijuana HIPAA laws coming into effect, I just want to speak out for people that are in.
Please don't turn that off here.
Yep. Okay, anyone else?
I was just muted. I just want to say I'm for the program.
All right, we need you to share your name and address if you're going to speak.
Okay.
And I think there's a lot more people like me as well. I'm going to.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll bring it to the council. We've heard a lot more commentary this evening, and I had my little bit of a say with that, and I'd like to quote some comments by the town attorney that this was regarding the town attorney's comments that stated April 7, 2021. Those comments along with the town council's conference with Phil last night confirmed the town council's charge for the planning board, as stated in my memo to you, this is Bill Strong, March 12, 2021. The operative language from the memo, second page is, quote, "Expanded marijuana facility development prevailing agricultural definitions remain problematic." Parenthesis, chapter 140, zoning section 140-9, closed parenthesis, "And prohibition on the face of existing language perhaps would not stand up in a court challenge." "But conjecture marijuana cultivation is allowed as a permitted use anywhere agriculture is permitted." "The town council and staff see the need, seize the need to find further insulated sections of town, not in Iowa, for a potential onerous land use all over town." The, and that's, that's, that's my fault. It's not Phil's fault. But it's reflective of the town attorney's comments to us. The draft ordinance with planning board review in common is not turned to restrict medical marijuana cultivation into a specific zone with appropriate performance standards, and state where the land use is appropriate or not allowed. That's where we are right now. We've, we've come to a point where we have the potential for larger facilities to operate anywhere in town. And the chosen path that we've taken since last fall, a year ago, was to define the use that's undefined in our ordinance right now, and then regulate that use through performance standards, and then put it in an area where it's not going to affect children, businesses, schools, or any, it's going to be tucked away, very similar to what we did with adult entertainment businesses back in the early 2000s. We were confronted by that, know, and as a result, nothing, nothing happened with that. And it is odd, when I get to that, and I look at the the section number, and it falls under 14067, it's .2 now, and that adult entertainment business, I believe, was now 14067.1. Is that how it is?
Yeah.
But 14067?
I'm not sure.
Well, the draft we have right now is 140-67.2. I, I think we ran out of numbers.
That's just the next sequence, but I'm not sure what the number before it is.
Well, 14067 is adult entertainment business, and so it really, just as a comment, I don't think it really belongs, you know, to have this with, under the same overall section, but if that's, if we've run out of numbers, we can't squeeze it in otherwise, then we we're stuck with this, but it's just something that I noticed, I've gone through the book today. So it's, it's the will of the council. I think we should go around, and we have some decisions we have to make if appropriate. If we can get that far regarding the building size and the number of of registered caregivers that would be at the council, which are out there, or other things, whether or not the land use table wants to be changed, or whatever we wanted to.
I can start. I'd like for us to just, I think we should, I'd be curious to hear what everyone thinks about the two notes that are currently in the draft ordinance, specifically the two or three questions, and the square footage. Hearing from Bill earlier was really helpful to me. I would be in favor for that of having the language read two or more caregivers. I think similar with what the planning board had originally proposed. And then on the square footage, I, I would be in favor of reducing this number. I have concerns about zeroing it out completely, because that, that seems very deliberate. I don't know what anyone else's thought is on that.
It's trouble.
Yeah.
I'm good with two. I like Phil's explanation of why he wanted two. I'm good with two. If we're going to zero it, then we just go up to I-1 and and, and don't allow it, because zero is just going to open us up, open us up to a lawsuit of why'd you create an ordinance that, to sidewalk to nowhere? Why have an ordinance that does nothing? So if we drop the zero, then we just put an N and do away with it. I think that's but it's an industrial park. Big picture, 5,000 square foot building isn't that big in an industrial park. It's not.
Big picture, 5,000 square foot building isn't that big in an industrial park. It's not that big of a building. I mean, it is when someone in a 5,000 square foot house, 5,000 square foot. Industrial building isn't that big. I could go either way. You want to make it 2,500, make it 2,500. I. Does matter to me, but 5,000 is not that big in the world of square footage.
Abby.
Um, I'm leaning with what John said as well. I hear the concern. To my tally, I have 39 emails. Now, that could be wrong, so. Yeah, overcounted someone, but that's a lot. And besides from hearing from Mitch tonight. I haven't heard a need expressed. When we started off this process years ago. With considering a storefront, we had a safety concern. There was reasoning behind. There was like a grassroots movement. We, we as counselors had heard a concern about safety, about this legal business and that there were issues that came up. And that's what started. It was facilitated by the survey, but that is what started us on this, on this journey in, for South Berwick, despite what the, the state had decided to do. As a state, as a town, we, we worked on this kind of from the impetus of there being an established need. I saw that need for medical storefront. I've tried to remain neutral on this. It's a legal business. And we need to be business friendly. We need to think about our taxpayers and our, our tax rate and, and being able to. Keep that in an affordable, livable, sustainable rate. And that's only going to be facilitated by being business friendly. But we still have to think about what we need in this village and what we want. And personally, while I'm quite neutral on, on this issue. I'm not seeing the need. And so I agree with the correspondence that we've gotten. And from what I've heard from those of you who have been participating. One positive we can say about Corona is wow, are we all more involved and engaged with one another, even though it's awful sitting behind a computer screen? It's still given us an opportunity as government officials to interact more with the public because we represent you. We're right now just four people that are supposed to represent the entire town. And the best way that we can do that is by hearing from you all. And what I have heard from you all is that this isn't a need. And so I'm very cognizant of that. And that's, that's pushing me out of my neutral stance a little bit. When I think about what does South Berwick need? What am I hearing from constituents? What makes sense for our town? I'm not getting that, even though this is a legal, this is a legal business. We've been asked pretty much unanimously to scale it down, this draft that we have, that we're considering. With 5,000 square foot of growing space has been labeled as a large scale growing operation. With the request, the constituent request pretty much unanimously to decrease that size. Tonight now, we've heard those that want to take that from five, 5,000 down to zero. To put a, you know, a so-called essential ban on the legal business activity. We've been instructed by our lawyer not to do that. And I take, I take that advice very, you know, we pay, we pay dearly for it, for all of his legal counsel and we're thankful for it. But he cautioned us very strongly against potential litigation if we would create an ordinance just to ban it. So in light of, of hearing from all of you and for the increased involvement, thankfully, we can't operate in a vacuum. Right now, what we have with 5,000 square feet of growing space would mean 10 registered caregivers could grow in that space potentially. That seems from what everyone's saying and this opportunity to look at it, like it's too big. So I am fine and I would support making it smaller to start small. We've already accomplished what we need to do. The moratorium runs out on Friday. We must define. Medical cultivation and that's what we're doing in this ordinance. Now, where we get to mess around a little bit is the growth space. We've been cautioned not to ban it. So. Cutting that in half from allowing 10 caregivers to join together to have 5,000 growth space would be five. Five growers coming together would be a growth base of 2,500. I see that as a way to start slow. It's a bit of a compromise. It's taking the needs and the concerns that we've heard from others that it's too big and making it smaller. You know, Mitch brought up the point of, we have to define it. We're allowed to say as a council where we want it to go. Let's start small. If the concern is that this is too big, we have a definition that works. We know we can't ban it. Or we could, but we could really get into some trouble legally. So let's make it smaller. So I'm, I'm in support of taking that 5,000. Feet number down lower. So if we do want to take it down to six registered caregivers, that's at 3,000 feet. Growth space, if we want to take it down to five, that's 2,500 growth space. So that way we're not banning an activity, we're allowing it, but we're also strategically and mindfully putting it in a place, which is our industrial park. Which has growing potential as well. It's more than a thousand feet from the school line. And I think it's a, I think it's a compromise that would be a, a careful and mindful step. And see if it works or, or not, if this could be, we might want to say, wow, 5,000 feet, that's really small. Or we're, we might set it to 3,000 tonight or 2,500 tonight and then later decide. It might make sense to make this number this or that. So it's, it's a little bit flexible, but. I want to just follow the legal advice that we were given in establishing a very clear definition so that it cannot go in all, on all zones. And then being mindful of what we've heard from the constituents, that this is a large grow operation and making it smaller. So that's a compromise that I'm, I'm willing to get into. Thank you.
Related to building size is also building offset. Look at. 500 foot offset.
And that's.
Separation between cultivation, so there's no cultivation facility shall be cited within 500 feet of another cultivation facility. That just describes the distance. So. If the buildings get smaller, do we wish to change that? Just the talking point.
I, Abby, I, I think that was well said. I, I like the suggestion of lowering it down to 2,500. I also just want to say for myself. And just like reemphasize the point that we are at a point where the more moratoriums were out, we don't have the ability to be able to. Enact another moratorium. We do not take any action on this ordinance this evening. That we are more or less opening the floodgates effective Monday. With this, with the death of the potential interpretation of agricultural livestock in our table A. I do feel like, speaking personally, I wish that we had had a little bit more time to review some of this. And I do think that across, over the, the last year or so, there were points where I think we. You know, maybe quite as much progress on this as we would have liked. However, though, I think, I do agree with what Abby just said with. We, we have to do something of this. We need to, to define and regulate this use. And while Phil did say that technically we could ban it across the board, which we could do so by narrowing that down to zero square feet. Or by putting an N in the I-1, he was very hesitant and not, very much so not recommending that approach. And I, I do feel like especially dwindling this number down to 2,500, which is a very small number. And given that we're only talking about one, one zone in town, none of the residential areas. I do feel like this is a really good compromise. And I, 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 I know that it's going, that's going to be perceived as not listening to the public. But I, I really do feel like we have taken that into account and made some pretty significant changes. Were we to move forward with the 2,500 thing, for example. You know, implementing a very large section around licensing to put some more structure and rules around this. And I, I, I recognize that no matter what we do, probably no one will be happy. I, I do think that we are tasked with the zoning, with the responsibility to implement zoning for this use. And I feel like we've done that here.
The other piece on the licensing. This, as we've attacked, all the things we've worked on over the last year. I mean, we had the petitions, we had to work through, we had all those other pieces and parts that. The budget and all the rest of these things that we, that we have to do. But. The. The ability to. Preserve our neighborhoods is, is a, is a very large concern for me. And, and so it's, this isn't the end of the road as far as licensing goes. I'm very hopeful that we're going to continue with. With regulating the registered caregivers and, and. You know, bringing these people part of the town. I mean, we're, we're, we're operating on a state mandated loophole. We, we don't know where they are. And we can't know where they are. And so. Perhaps some of the things that happen in town currently are, are a result of that. But. I think that, that, that as far as I'm concerned, this isn't the end of the story. It's continuing a chapter of the story to, to get. Get this thing under control. Now, the question of two or more. Do I recall something from the law that states that if there are two people, two registered caregivers. Operating in the same dorm site. They can have up to 1,000 square feet of candidate.
Yes, that would have to make sense because each individual caregiver can grow 500 feet. So two caregivers, they could grow a max of 1,000.
But what I'm wondering about is, is, does that put. By going with two or more. Does that bring them into a category where we don't want them to be?
Depends on the size of the building.
And it's not residential.
So, I, I mean, if you do two or more, you're a 2,500 square foot building. You're going to put four, not five. Because you got to have alleyway, walkways through and, and granted, amenities, break rooms and the rest will be off to the side and not counted in that. But you have 2,500 square feet of growing space. You can't put them on top of each other. You have to be able to walk through, attend to them, to trim them, to do. Of us have been inside a house, inside a grow operation, not just as a council, we haven't gone. So they need that spacing between the plants. So you're only going to get four if you do a 2,500 square foot building, max. Which is.
Jack, can you just explain further what you mean by. When we did two or more, are we putting them in a category? We all want them to be.
Right now, as, as a registered caregiver, if we're married. Oh, we cohabitate. And you're a licensed caregiver and I'm a licensed caregiver, or excuse me, registered caregiver and I'm a registered caregiver. We're allowed to have. Our 500 square feet.
Yeah.
And we're allowed to work on each other's cultivation facility. Does that, does this new rule by going to a two or more, with those people who are working out of their house into this category? What is the, the, the factor? There's, it talks about the definition about. In a location which is not the registered caregiver's primary year round residence, or their patient's primary year round residence. But is that, does that put it into another?
But these are medical, these are licensed. So licensed medical marijuana. Registered. Medical marijuana grow. Other than that, big caregiver. Correct.
In order to grow it, they have to.
Jack, I, I think what you're asking is, I don't think this would impede upon a couple. Let's say there was a couple and they were both.
David, the, the language in the, in the definition that talks about. Cultivating, processing or storing of medical marijuana by a registered caregiver at a location which is not the registered caregiver's primary year round residence. So I guess that might answer my question.
Yes, it does. It doesn't, it doesn't impact like the mom and pop. All home. No, it doesn't hit on that at all. And that was my concern at first. So I probably added to the confusion of that because that, that was my first look at it.
So when we, we, we use the word two or more, there's no ceiling other than the limitation for those buildings.
Which is essentially the credit of the 500 square foot.
It's self-limiting. No, I'm, I'm fine. I know I was one of the ones that again had had a different take on that when I first looked at it because I thought it was residential. It's not residential. I'm fine with it being two or more. I don't see any difference really with that. For that particular point.
So for purposes of our discussion right now, this is, we put the phone motion. Up in the second line of 140 dash nine definitions. Though one in parentheses would, would read two, two, two or more. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And then note two would be, that would be deleted. By 2,500 being inserted, that's currently discussed. That we're talking about.
Yeah.
Also, if this were to be voted on tonight, we would need to add. An emergency preamble to it. This time is of the essence on it.
Does that have to go in the motion, Jack?
Yeah, I just wanted to just review that emergency preamble. What the appropriate language should be.
The other note, the other placeholder, I guess, was the licensing fees.
Yeah.
And can you refresh? And because we want this all to be out in the open. Jen, can you refresh how we established, was that based on? That was based on surrounding towns?
If you want, I, because I kind of drew this, this language together. Jen did, Jen did send over. The licensing fees and ordinances for Loria and Elliot. And I had went down like Turner, I think I took a look at, and I just kind of tried to land somewhere in the middle and give a round numbers. But I'm, I'm not tied to these at all. My bigger goal with this was establishing the process.
Yes. Okay, thank you. There was a rhyme and a reason to it and it was based on some research and. Okay, thank you.
Jennifer, do you have a recommendation on the, based on what we would, you know, we started off with this, we didn't want to be orders to the, we didn't want it to be alone.
And I, the surrounding towns, as the square footage goes up and the more caregivers that there is, the, the price goes up from there. It's kind of based on square footage. So I think at 2,500, this was a good price. If we were to have a 15,000 square foot place like Elliot allows, they have a much higher fee that goes along with that. So it's a sliding scale on the square footage. I feel this is one of them.
And I guess the last point is the size. If that's a point. If that's a point, um, we've had it recommended to a zero. This placeholder was five thousand, which would be, uh, ten caregivers growing.
Sorry, Abby, are you talking about the square footage again?
Yes.
Oh, I think we had sort of all just. Correct me if I'm wrong, guys, but sort of kind of got all agreed on the twenty-five hundred.
Yep. So are there any other points that need to be? Done licensing size?
The, the only thing I wanted to review was the, uh. The building offset. Now that we're small, we have a smaller building, do we want to consider a smaller offset between the cultivation facility?
I would say no.
But the planning board right now has recommended the five hundred feet, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
I'm fine with the planning board's recommendation.
Jack, I just want to plant a, David Galrath joined us.
David, I didn't see you before.
I don't.
Can I ask the intelligence of the board if you wanted to speak?
Yes, I just, um, I'm not sure if you could actually see me. I'm having problems with, uh, the camera. It looks like on my end, but. Um, I wanted to clarify the, uh, the two or more. What we had talked to the planning board about whether or not we should do two or more or three or more. It was really to allow the home growers to continue operating. But the discussion really went it about, okay, if you had a household and five people were suddenly. Licensed to grow under the same roof, you could have, you know, twenty-five hundred square feet growing in a residential neighborhood. So this isn't not prohibiting two people from growing together. But how it was written in there is if you suddenly had three growers. Then they would have to, uh, be located in a industrial, uh, and in the I-one zone, uh, as proposed currently.
Can I, can I just ask then? So David, if we, if we change it to two. Then we actually are prohibiting, because once you say two or more, they have to go in the industrial zones. You can't have a mom and pop. You know, sort of operation with two growers, right? That would be, once you've regulated it, it has to go there because it's, it's not an option. Like you could have two or more. It's that if you are two or more, you have to go there.
So the.
That's why we picked three.
Correct. And it, and I think it's the phraseology, if we would have said up to two growers.
Oh.
Or once you hit that third grower, that's, that's what the board will, what we were talking about having it. Then you'd have to locate it in an industrial zone. The, the thing is about the properties too, you may have. In the industrial zone, the way that the ordinance is written right now is you may be having a multi-tenant building. And you could allow a grower up to twenty-five hundred, as is being discussed now. A tenant for twenty-five hundred square feet of growing space. But because you go by the property line, it would preclude. All of a sudden, a ten unit, uh, building from becoming ten individual growing spaces of whatever their square footage for their tenant spaces. So that was sort of put in there so you wouldn't have five in a row in one building and basically operating as one.
Thank you, David. Then just to clarify then, my, um, opinion is I, I support three or more with, with that explanation. Thank you. Because I absolutely did not, that make, that, that just makes sense. But I didn't want to limit or prohibit a mom and pop, uh, uh, two. So I really appreciate, thank you for that clarification. So I can make it clear then the three or more would need to get, would be in the industrial zone and be licensed.
Yeah. So you, you could change that language very easily and just say more than two. Growing in a facility must meet these standards.
Okay.
So I just, sorry, I just want to jump in on, and I'm processing this. So the, the, the language here. Specifically calls this out as being not the registered caregiver's primary year round residence. So. If we were to change the language to say two or more. Then we're prohibiting, then we would effectively be prohibiting two registered caregivers and all of the other zones. From establishing a growth facility. On their, not at their home.
Right. Well, we, we were addressing the home growers. They'd have to do it at their home. Where they, where they reside. So if it would, uh. If you're renting a place, if you have two, uh, caregivers, they could both grow for their patients, five patients per. Type of thing. When we were discussing it is, okay, what if you suddenly have five different people who are also registered caregivers? You know, when does it stop becoming a mom and pop? And when does it? And so the, I would say, yes, if you have up to two or any more than two under one. Property, then it would trigger it to go into the industrial zone or require it to go to the industrial zone.
So are there, do we have concerns about this specifically stating at a location which is not the registered caregiver's primary year round residence? Because if there are two or three caregivers, for example, living together. And it is, it is their primary residence, are we then allowing that to happen because we're specifically separating this from? Sent to, is everyone following what I'm saying?
Uh, again, the, the, the intent originally was to allow. The mom and pops, you know, two people in a home. But again, once you start getting three, four, five, that may be all related. And you also have to nowadays be very careful with what constitutes a family or a home. So we can't specify, you know, you have to be, for example, a married couple or anything like that. Legally, you cannot do that. So. That's why we did it as a, uh, a property. And then you could have two, whether they're renting or they own it themselves. But again, once you get to a certain stage, you know, some people, what if you have ten people in your family, all are registered growers? And so it was just sort of trying to put what could be an industrial use where it belongs. And leaving the home grows which are allowed by the state to, to grow, but stopping those from becoming really big.
Do you guys, do you, do you see what I'm saying? Like, I feel like the way this is, the way we have this laid out. There was a family of five people living out on Bell Marsh Road that are all registered caregivers. Because that is their primary residence. They, because, because we're explicitly saying this is not the primary. Do, do you see what I'm saying? Like, I feel like that would still be problematic. Yeah, yeah, that potentially would be problematic. And, and on, and be doing the opposite of what we're. Here, we're just like protecting our residential areas because it, it, it probably is, it's rather unlikely. But if we did have a family or multiple people living in the same place, because we have that clause in there. I would potentially interpret that as allowing it in those instances.
That, that was not the intent when, when it was written. It would be to limit, even if it's their home. To limit it to two people growing at one household or one, on one property.
And so according to this, it wouldn't matter if there was five members in a household that all were registered caregivers. We would limit it to the two.
No, can we limit? The, the number. So. I think we're in the never, never land there as far as, and so this is more work that we need to do.
Yes, but I think that we can't, this is.
That's what I'm saying. I don't think we can fix that. Question about the mom and pop operation and the kids, I don't know, while live together. I don't think we can, we can fix that.
I don't think that's what was Mallory's attempting to doing, you know, with children, but it was just. Setting a limit with how big something can get in a residential zone. This whole point was, let's be mindful about, we have to define it. And decide where we want it. So we've, we've, we're, we've been talking about just the res, I'm sorry, uh, just the industrial zone. And so by us adding the number of caregivers and where you can grow, that limits it in other places as well. So if it can only be two, whether they be married or not, but they're living at the same residence, we've then made that, we've overextended our power. To decide, you can't have a larger scale operation. It can only be, um, you know, a wife and a wife or, you know, whatever the combo is of domestic partnership there at that one residence.
Abby, I don't think we have the answer to that.
That's, I believe I was saying what David was, was just advising us.
Correct.
Oh, so I guess like if I, if I read this out. I live on Bell Marsh Road. That's one of the, our, it's almost it. I'm not even sure which one. Um, and my husband and my daughter and I are, all, all become caregivers. We don't, and, and the way as I, I read this, that situation doesn't even touch this because it is our primary residence. So then I could build a facility of fifteen hundred square feet. In where I live currently. So I guess.
You could, Jeremy could, but Savannah couldn't too. So you and Jeremy with us doing the three or more, using David's advice, which I like, which was switching the wording, the not more than two. Right? That to me just makes more, more logical sense. Um, it's less convoluted. So you and Jeremy could both grow. Right? Uh, medically, um, so a thousand canopy total, but Savannah, according to how we have this written, couldn't. So you couldn't have three. So we're capping it. So we're saying we want the larger grow if it's going to happen. Um, twenty-five hundred feet is where we're at right now in the industrial zone. And you have to go into the industrial zone if you're medically growing and you're more than two on one, on one residence.
But what I am saying is that. That situation would, is not even captured in this ordinance. Because that situation is my primary residence. And we are specifically saying, this is something that is not the caregiver's primary residence. So because I would be looking to establish that at my home, which is my primary residence, everything we're talking here does not apply to me.
That's true.
That is the point I'm trying to make.
The, the, the primary resident issue came up. So you couldn't just sort of lease a bit of space to someone who, to grow at your house. So the, the way that it was written was even if you have, if you're in a residential district, you are limited to two people. Even if it's your primary residence. If you start wanting three, four, five people to grow there, then. The thought was that should go into an industrial district so it doesn't get overly large in residential districts. Because a caregiver can be in any zoning district. And that sort of, that, that sort of came from the state. The state said you couldn't regulate. I mean, they, they wouldn't give municipalities even the locations of where their growers were, were occurring. So that it was municipalities, stay away from the people who are allowed to do this under main state law. But again, we can try and curtail it. So you don't suddenly have people saying, oh, well, this is sort of my cousin through marriage. And this is their adopted so-and-so. And so you have something that's functioning at a much larger. Scale than you really expect to find in a residential zoning district. I mean, if, if someone wants to, you know, grow their own supply and just keep it to themselves, the state says you can't go in there and regulate that. But again, under logic, once you get to a certain breaking point, then yeah, you should grow within a, in an industrial zone.
We have to forward on it.
Read your vote to attend. I just perhaps throw out, because I, I feel like the, the, the language here that's for me problematic is the fact now. The fact that we're saying this is not the registered caregiver's primary residence. So if we were to strike that language and, and so basically then it would be the caregiver's primary residence or. Something that's not the primary residence, then does that address this issue that I'm bringing up?
We've had legal review of this. And we're fine. If, if, we might be crossing a threshold by getting into. Caregivers and registered caregivers in their own residence.
And I thought the whole point of this was to put it where we wanted it, uh, or where it would make sense. And that would be if anywhere in the industrial park.
We still haven't addressed.
Haven't. No, but as far as what Mallory was just saying, just to, just to attest to that. By adding the, the, uh, two. By limiting it to two per residence, we're, we're essentially capping it ourselves then and, and.
I'm sure we can do that, Abby. I, 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 I just don't know. I don't know if that's the case. All I'm saying is the language we have here has been reviewed and it, and it passes muster. If we, right now, we might be going over a threshold where we don't want to be.
Okay.
But that just wouldn't make sense to me.
And I would suggest, um, using David's language and that, um, not exceeding two. Or not more than two. In that section.
The definition?
Yes.
Two or more or not exceeding two?
Not exceeding two. David, wasn't that what you?
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, hang on, Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, extend meeting hours.
Second.
Motion to, uh, go beyond nine o'clock.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, on that note, the meeting has been scheduled to run until nine twenty. I am having trouble getting back into it to edit it for Zoom. So at nine twenty, it's going to shut the Zoom wash.
Yeah.
Cause it won't let me back into editing for some reason.
By paper and not by, by machine, we have to, anything goes beyond nine, we have to, have to extend.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
She was just saying that the Zoom calls likely going to end at seven twenty. The podcast is running for, um, for.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think might be set until nine thirty.
Okay. So I have a motion, a second to, uh, extend the, the meeting beyond nine o'clock. Uh, any, any discussion on that? Uh, Abby, you have anything on that?
No.
Valerie, John. Okay. Okay. We'll take the roll, Valerie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Abby?
Yes.
Jack says yes. So that motion passes four to zero. I move the audience wish to be recognized. Is there any objection?
I just want to be sensitive to the time limit we have.
Alaria had her hand up for a while, Jack.
The. These are my opinions about legal counsel. Uh, I would suggest my opinion differs a little bit differently than what you've been told, called this may pass legal muster. What Mallory is talking about is the collective issue. And what we've been saying all along is this ordinance does not do anything to protect. The individual residences in every zone in town. When I read this, based on what Mallory is saying. If me on my home, if my wife, if my kids and all that. If we want to become registered caregivers, right out back at my house, as long as I meet the setback requirements. I can build a twenty-five hundred square foot building, more likely five thousand, with my five hundred square feet of candidate. That's the core issue. That's the collective issue. And it's all in the definition because it's all tied together. The caregiver is different than a registered caregiver.
Acknowledge.
And then, and, and so if you acknowledge in the cultivation, the registered caregiver be two or more. And by putting a limitation, which has been the, the, the conversation about regulating them as a home occupation. Which every other town has, has done. Now you've closed that loophole. So now you've protected. The, all of the residences from, at this point, what could be tomorrow, you can get an application for a five thousand square foot. Building in any zone in town, and you can't say no. That's the concern. That's that two, four, three, zero dash D, the collective. That I believe you can't. Changing this, you can correct that. And that's what we've been saying and that's part of our concern. This response, this just simply adds a whole new use. Granted, if this is the direction the council wants to go, we're fine. But this is just adding a brand new use in the I-one zone. But it's not, it's not protecting all other zones in the residential areas in town. That's.
You, you, you're starting to repeat yourself.
I understand.
Your earlier comments, but what, what it, what it comes down to is the fact that, uh. We have what's in front of us right now, and we're not gonna stop there. We're not gonna stop there. We're gonna address what we can address tonight. And then we'll, we'll move on to regulation of, uh, of, of caregivers that we're allowed to do.
Yeah, but you're gonna go back and redoing that definition.
Well, perhaps, but, but we, we, we have what we have right now. So thank you very much. So, uh. I guess where I am right now is I would like to leave the, um. We, we simply have to decide on whether we want two or more, or three or more. That's the charge in front of us right now. And I, I, I'm really, I don't want it, so means a facility used. Uh, for two or more, or three or more, for cultivating, processing, restoring medical marijuana by a registered caregiver. At a, at a location which is not their registered prime, which is not the registered caregiver's primary given residence, or their patient's primary. That's it. That, that's what we have to deal with tonight. And, uh, and the other stuff, uh, as we, as we try and regulate a locally licensed. Uh, caregivers and registered caregivers. For a minute, those are the questions we have to deal with. But that's how I see it.
Okay, I would just change that just a smidgen, Jack, so that it be reflective of what David's language was, that, um, no more than two.
Up to two.
Up to two? As long as it's capped at two, it gets that couple, you, you know, so.
Pretty out there. You don't want to have up to two in, in the industrial park. You want, want either two or more or three or more.
David, can you explain that again?
So.
Two, two hundred words for us. Just, just address the two or more or three or more, okay?
Yeah, David.
Okay, just, sorry, I was making sure you wanted to ask me. So the, the only thing that the two or more or three or more. Really regulates is whether or not you have to go to the planning board and that use would be directed to an industrial zone. So it was, you, you can't prohibit people from growing at their own houses. Um, so the, the reason is we didn't want others to come and start growing on other people's property that wasn't their primary residence. But if, uh, two people who happen to live together, roommates, whatever, they are both caregivers, they could grow at the facility. Once you, uh, at their homes, once you get to a threshold of two or more people, excuse me. More than two people, then you would get triggered to go, that you could not make that facility larger at your residence. It would be directed immediately to an industrial zone, and then they'd have to go through the planning board process to accomplish that.
You say more than two, you, you're meaning it can't be a half, it's gonna be three or more.
Okay, I'm fine with three or more. I thought more than two was more like, like made more sense. You didn't have to like turn your head to figure it out.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, it's, it, it, I think you're trying to say the same thing, so. You could have up to two growers from a residential property, for example. But that's, does actually limit, so these things wouldn't expand in residential zoning districts. Beyond what you'd normally see in a normal household.
And that's what the goal is. We wanna, we wanna put it in one place and not have it encroach into residential. Yeah.
You, you, I want to make sure that if, it, right now, under the main state law, you could have the couple. Or two people at a residence allowed to grow in a residential district, and that would remain.
Yes.
Okay, just, just want to make sure.
If it was Mallory and her husband and Savannah, then no, in the residential.
Correct.
Yes, and that's what, uh, it feels like consensus is our goal is. We want to protect the residential.
So you want to go more than two.
Correct.
Goes.
Yep, but I just want to emphasize the point, even if we change it to three or more, the situation that I discussed. Numerous times about my house in the residential district would not then trigger me to have to come to the industrial zone. Because it is my primary residence. I just want to make sure everyone is super clear on that, 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 I, I think David, what you're saying is that. Once it hits three primary caregivers, then it would trigger me to have to come to the industrial zone, and that's not what this says. It's just not residence.
Whether, whether you rent it, if it's, if it's your primary residence, if you have more than two, this would regulate that. You would, under the industrial zone, because you go from being sort of a, as, as, I guess easiest way to say it. Is like a home occupation. Once you hit that, once you start having three people or more than three growing. The board felt that it was more of an industrial type operation, and therefore it would go there. You could have one grower taking up all five thousand square feet.
David.
Yes.
I, 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 what you're saying, and I agree with you, but the language drafted here does not state that. It says, we're defining a medical marijuana cultivation facility as a location which is not the registered caregiver's primary year-on residence. Or their patient's primary year-on residence. So that example that you're repeating. Does not even touch this, this ordinance, because we're, we're only talking here about. Locations that are not the primary caregiver, caregiver's residence. Therefore, the actual primary caregiver's residence is not even addressed here.
And I, I believe that was addressed in there unless something got deleted along the way, because even if it is your residence. Then it was gonna be two, uh, excuse me, more than two growers would. Whether it's your, your residence, I mean, you could have 10 people living there, it's all their primary residence. But once you have more than two growers, the way that it was written, then it would become more of a, a, a commercial entity rather than that. Someone just.
It's not the way it's presented in front of us.
That's true, because when I look at the notes, it's presented there in the notes, but the notes aren't reflected then in the ordinance specifically. I don't see that two or three number anywhere other than in the notes.
Okay, thank you, David.
But in, in saying, in saying that, Jack, and just to simplify this a little bit, since we just made it complicated in the past couple minutes. We are automatically capping. I think that's a problem with the, the two and the three. We might be able to get that figured out in other places. But as far as what we're doing right now, we set an automatic cap when we decide how big that the growth space can be. So, um, you know, if we made it fifteen thousand feet, you know, that, that's a whole different dynamic than putting it down to five. Or putting it down to twenty-five hundred, because we're automatically capping how big that, how many caregivers can be in there, just to.
We're only capping how many caregivers can be in this facility and a location that is not the registered caregiver's primary residence.
Correct, in the industrial zone.
In the industrial, so therefore, the, the, I think, just to wrap up, I think where we're at with this. I think, were we to enact this, we absolutely, next week, we need to start talking about. Um, caregiver, registered caregiver, um, regulation and licensing to address this potential collective issue of. Me and my, my husband and my daughter and whomever else is living with me. Um, are, we're all registered caregivers and could band together in the residential zone, because we're not.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with getting into that. Um, if we can't do that here, if we can't fix that problem here. And it looks like we can't, because it's already crystal clear that this is not in a, a residential place. It's only, we're only talking about industrial. I'm completely fine with putting that as a priority to. Our definitions.
Yeah, I think we need to have that as an, I'm going to check that out.
Yes, I agree. I agree. That's gonna solve a lot of the issues that we've been hearing about these.
Okay, so all of that said, three or more.
Yes, yes.
Okay, do we need the motion with the emergency preamble? Noted.
Why don't you stick, uh, why don't you just stick to the, um. Include in the motion, uh, amendments to zoning table A. Land use, the medical marijuana cultivation slash growing facilities. Section one forty-nine definitions, again, for medical marijuana cultivation slash growing facility. And then section one forty-sixty-seven dot two, again, for medical marijuana cultivation slash growing facility. But that, then, then we can deal with the emergency preamble following that.
Okay.
Just way it's shown in the, in the ordinance, the heading to the ordinance, just so we, it's clear what we're acting on tonight. And then you can include the language that, you know, is amended to, you know, for the twenty-five hundred square feet of three or more. It's a definition. If I confuse everybody.
I assume that Abby was taking notes.
No, I was looking for the verbiage, um, just because I think I have. I was punting it to John.
Okay, um, suggested language for the motion, John, would be, uh. I move to amend the South River Zoning Ordinance. Zoning Table A, land use. The medical marijuana growing, size, excuse me, medical marijuana cultivation slash growing facilities. Uh, section one forty-nine definition, again, for medical marijuana cultivations, cultivation slash growing facility. Uh, amended to read. Uh, three or more, and, and a note to, uh, twenty-five hundred square feet. And then one forty-sixty-seven dot two, medical marijuana cultivation slash growing facility.
Re-Be.
I guess it would be. But that's, that's a total. There's a second for that.
Second.
Any, any further discussion? Hearing that, we'll take the roll, Mallory?
Yes.
John?
Yep.
Abby?
Yes.
Jack, oh, yes. The motion passes four zero. Um, the emergency preamble, uh, would, would read, uh. Whereas time is of the essence, the South River Council, uh, enacts the proposed ordinance effective immediately.
So moves.
The motion is seconded, any discussion on that? Barbara, anything else? Any of the magic words you need after that? So we'll take the roll. Mallory, John?
Yes.
Abby?
Yes.
Jack, oh, yes, the emergency preamble, uh. So, uh.
Mr. Chairman, move the chair.
All's a favor?
I have a packet for you, but, um, I'll try to bring by some at some point.
You have a packet for me?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, bye. Good night, everybody.
Come on, whip an R O L.